I'm ready.
Good evening. It's Tuesday, August 10th of 2021. This is the Stoughton City Council Meeting. First order of business is the roll call. Go ahead.
Caraballo. Doom. Haley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mieski.
Present.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Dukalski.
Here.
And Vinegas.
Here.
There are 12 Alders present.
All right. Thank you very much. And minutes and reports are in the packet. Had nobody signed up for public comment. So that would take us to communications. Are there any communications from Alders? All right, I'm hearing no communication from Alders. I do have one. I would just want to... Oh, go ahead. Alder Chris Legaki.
CACP would just like to thank everyone who attended our last listening session. It was our first. And our next listening session will be on August 26th at 6:00 PM until approximately 7:30. And you'll hear more about it at the next council meeting, but just wanted to offer gratitude to everyone who attended, and we are in the midst of them.
All right. Thank you. Any other communications? Hearing none. I did have one. I wanted to communicate to the council that longtime Towne Dunn Chairperson Ed Benahan passed away the other day. And Ed served for many years and was a real advocate for, you know, land preservation and environmental issues. He was also a member of CARPSY. So we want to send out our condolences to Ed's family. Any other communications? All right, hearing none. In the packet, we did have a report that came from the planning department that they wanted me to share with you. And if you look at the zoning activity, you'll see there was a year-to-date and for the month of July on the permits, in particular, the remodels. You can see that in July of 2021, we've had 251 permits pulled for remodeling versus 56 last year. And year-to-date, we're at 793 compared to 252. It's pretty substantial. You can see people are taking the time and investing in their homes, which is a great thing. Our construction numbers are in there as well. They're pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past few years on the new permits for new and residential and commercial buildings. So just wanted to share that. That came from the plan department. That's something that Desi puts together for us every month. And we appreciate the time that she takes to do that. First action item would be the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is in the packet, and it looks like there's several items on there. I would entertain a motion for approval for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I abstain from this one.
Okay, I didn't catch the first second. Was that Alder Person Doom?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a motion by Jensen, a second by Doom. And Joyce, you're going to abstain. You want to abstain from all of them or one of them in particular?
Actually, D.
Okay, we'll put you down abstaining, D. That way you can vote on the rest if you'd like.
Right.
Anybody like anything acted on separately or have any questions about any of them?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alder Person Haley.
Regarding the appointments to the Sustainability Committee, I don't think we actually have any council appointments yet officially.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess I was thinking that we had two that had volunteered, but I didn't officially appoint them. So I can... We can either do that now or we can put it on the next agenda. What would you like to do?
I'd suggest that we pull it out and then make an amendment for tonight.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll vote on the consent agenda without that item, and then we'll come back to it. Any other things that you want acted on separately? All right, hearing none. All approve of the consent agenda minus one item. Say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. So that takes us back to the one item with the appointments. Somebody want to make a motion and then we can... I think the two that had expressed interest was Rachel and Ben Myakrit. Would I say that?
Yes.
So those are the two that I would put up for appointment. I think these are year appointments, so we can always come back next year and rotate that if that's the desire of the group. If nobody has any objections, I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
My motion would be to add Ben Alder Person Haley and who's the other one?
Vinegas.
Vinegas. To the Sustainable Committee along with the citizen appointments, and I'd vote for approval on that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? Here none. Oh, go ahead.
Just that it looks like we got a really well-rounded and well with good backgrounds, a group of citizen volunteers, and I'm glad for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was really pleased with the response. I know a couple in particular were either I approached them or they were referred to me by somebody else I approached, and they brought some professional background as well as the interest to do that. So I'm really happy with the makeup of the group as well. And I know they're anxious to get started, so we'll send out an email and maybe a doodle poll and see if we can round everybody up for a meeting here so they can start working. And then this is the one I believe Joyce is going to abstain on, so that worked out. Any other questions or comments?
Just to remind you by the mayor that this was an amendment, so we'll have to have a vote on the amendment and then a vote on the resolution.
Okay, I thought I heard you make the motion as... Okay, amended. That's fine.
As an amendment.
Okay, so we'll... Well, we'll vote on adding the two council members and then we'll vote on the whole thing. So all in favor of the two council members, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? All right, that carries. So then we'll approve the rest with the council members as well. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is old business in R102 of 2021. This one is coming from CACP as well, and this is for the virtual meeting. So I'll pull this one up. Alder Person Haley.
Excuse me, I... We missed R118 2021?
I think that's part of the consent agenda.
Oh, it's listed separately, but okay. Sorry about that. Excuse me.
That's all right. I did a double take on it myself because it was on a second page in my printout.
All right, so this is our 102 of 2021. We brought this back to CACP to fine-tune some of the rules and policies regarding remote access and hybrid access for city meetings. Do we have Attorney Snyder on the call? Yes, I see you.
Yep, I'm here.
I think if you could go over the details of the changes, you would do a better job than I.
Sure.
But I will make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, a second by Jensen. Go ahead, Attorney Snyder.
The council requested several changes at its... At the last meeting where it looked at this, including that the council requested that we delete a provision that required motions to be posted and submitted in writing. So that's no longer in this version of the policy. The council requested clarity on the fact that the public may attend both in-person or virtually. So that was added to the last provision, which was M, and now we've added another. The policy was amended to give the chair the authority to control the chat box and to prohibit members from engaging in private conversations using the chat box. This was modified to say that members attending virtually shall announce themselves during the roll call, or if they are not present for the roll call, shall do so as soon as they can thereafter, but shall not interrupt someone who is speaking to do so. The biggest or most significant change made to the policy actually relates to closed sessions and confidentiality. So the council requested that a provision be added to require members and staff participating virtually in closed session to do so in a private place so as to protect the confidentiality of the discussion that would be had. That provision was added, but I also took the liberty, which was subsequently approved by CACP, to add some additional language about closed sessions. So I would direct the council to the last provision in this version of the ordinance, paragraph N. So paragraph N sub 1 now discusses the fact that a member can participate in closed session by virtual means, but must do so in a private place. Sub 2 discusses the procedure relating to giving the public notice about how to regain access to a meeting if council or another committee has gone into closed session and intends to reconvene in open session. So this talks about how the clerk should, at the time, publishing notice of the meeting include what time the public or excuse me, include what time the committee intends to reconvene and give notice about how the public may re-access the meeting once that happens.
I have a question on that, and Rachel, thank you for making all those changes. It's going to be really hard for the clerk to figure out when we're going to reconvene. So like we discussed the other day, sometimes a closed session, what you think is only going to last 15 minutes, may last an hour. And sometimes a session that may last that you thought were going to last an hour may only last 15 minutes. So I guess I would make a suggestion or amendment to this is that if there is a closed session item, that that item may be placed at the end of the agenda, so we're not making the public wait in a waiting room, you know, for a long time. And it would free up the clerk from trying to figure out the time allotments and the public from being angry, being put in a room what they thought was going to be 15 minutes or an hour and 15 minutes. So I'll make that amendment to... For number two, that any agenda item that calls for a closed session be placed at the end of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, second by Elder Hunt. Anything else you want to add to that, Regina, or that captured?
I probably didn't say it as beautifully as what Rachel could probably put in words, but that was the gist of it.
I had a question on that also, if I could. Regina, were you wanting that sentence to be taken out about publishing the time that the body intends to reconvene in open session? Because I didn't gather that from your motion. It sounds like we would still need to include that, and I'm not comfortable with that.
Good call, Lisa. Yes, I think that is what my intent was, to get that off, because I think it's really... It would put undue burden on to the clerk to try to figure that out.
Yeah, typically what we would do is we would, you know, maybe give an estimate, but certainly might not always be accurate, and I guess that's up to the person that is attending the meeting on whether or not they want to hang on, whether it's in-person or virtual. You know, depending on the item, sometimes we give a courtesy call afterward if it's, you know, regarding a business or an individual-type decision. So we would still, you know, be sensitive to that as well. Alder Person.
And the public also has opportunity to watch it on WSTO, and when it reconvenes, they can see that it's reconvened as well.
Right.
So as I remember our CACP meeting, I actually, I'm not sure that I got into the minutes this way, but I think our intent was to remove the part where it said the time that the body intends to reconvene and just leave it open about how the clerk will be informing the public. I don't know if other members of CACP can add their recollections. But I thought that was what we landed on in the final version.
But we had... We would have to give the clerk some direction. I mean, just leaving it open-ended is not fair to the clerk. Um, I think we ideally would give her or him some direction that it's at the end of the agenda, and if it's a business matter, the clerk or the mayor will reach out to that business after the meeting to let them know what was decided, if they can disclose it.
What I remember from CACP was that we didn't discuss moving it to the end, and because, to be honest, I've only seen closed session at the end, so it's probably good that it's stated, but that just wasn't part of our discussion. What I do recall, and Ben helped me out here, was when we do have virtual Zoom rooms, we talked about those features and the fact that there can be waiting rooms, and they simply, we would be separate, and that's why we were keeping that open, is that we would simply come back together because of the technology. And a lot of this is, we're not even using Zoom yet, and so we're really... That's what I recall from CACP. And so this might be a moving target for a while, given that we're not even using that technology yet.
Part of this conversation, I think, was that even though we're doing Zoom for now, we wanted these rules to be pretty much platform-agnostic, that they would, you know, that would be adaptable to if we went to a different platform in the future, you know? I don't have objections to this amendment, but I would want to hear the exact language again.
All my amendment was to is to have the clerk put any closed session at the end of the agenda. And yes, lately it has been always at the end of the agenda, but it has not been the case for as long as I've been on committee, and it's always, sometimes we moved it to the end, even though it was in the middle. By stating that it needs to be put at the end, it gives the clerk clear direction, which is always nice. And also, I think I heard that that the clerk no longer has to do... Shall... The sentence, "The clerk shall publish a time that the body intends to reconvene in open session", needs to be deleted, because I think that it's going to be really hard, and I just... And, you know, I just... People will get nasty if we go too long or, you know, or if we reconvene too short and they come back in and they missed it. So just eliminating that. If we have to put them in a Zoom room, if they choose to stay for an hour and a half or 15 minutes, that's their choice. It shouldn't be an onus on the clerk to try to estimate what the will and the length of speak the council is willing to take.
Okay, so as I understand it, the amendment includes both of those provisions. And then Rachel, I don't... Can you tidy up the language for us?
I'm thinking about it. Do you want me to give it a swing right now?
Sure.
Okay, so I would think what you're proposing is to delete the first sentence and replace it with something along the lines of any items to be discussed in closed session shall be placed as the last items on the published agenda.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
The rest can be like saved, because I think that goes with what Ben was talking about and and Elder Legaki, is that the technology is going to be ever-changing, you know? It's just that the time aspect I had a problem with.
So you'd like to retain the last sentence about reconvening in open session?
Sure, I mean, we always have to do... Yeah, I mean, because we don't know if the technology is going to be in the future, and even Zoom, we can put them in a different room. It's going to be up to the public whether or not they want to stay or not in that room.
Okay, so it's just deleting the first sentence and replacing it as discussed.
Yes, thank you.
All right, anybody have any questions on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, that motion does carry, so we'll go back to the original motion as amended. Are there any other amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of the main motion as amended, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. As long as we're on the topic, can we just skip the number 20 quick? We put this on here because of the, you know, the variant and whether or not the council is going to want to return to hybrid or in-person meetings in two weeks. I just noticed that Dane County has gone from hybrid back to a virtual already, and I kind of wanted to at least get a feel for council members, how you feel about it before the end of tonight, to see if you still want to go back to potentially in-person or or hybrid, or if you want to stick to virtual, at least until the next meeting. And if so, we can continue to leave this on the agenda.
My preference is to go back. Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead, Jean. Jean, you were on there.
I just clicked my mic open. Go, I'm still thinking about my thoughts.
Okay, my preference would be to go back to virtual. I still have kids that are not eligible for vaccination yet, so I would rather conduct meetings, my meetings, virtually still.
All right. And did I see Alder Person Hunt? Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to say that until the Delta variety settles down, I think the virtual would make the most sense.
All right, anybody else have any different thoughts?
I would be in favor of the hybrid, but I'm okay either way.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, I'm in favor of just virtual at this time, and similar to Alder Hunt, I would like this revisited in October. Beginning or the end, it doesn't matter.
Okay, unless there's somebody that really strongly objects, I think we'll just continue to go virtual. So that's all.
I think right here is a hand up.
Oh, yeah. Just a quick comment. I've been an advocate for the hybrid, and I would, as much as I would like to see that, I think that it's only good sense to go back to virtual until, like people are saying, until this settles down, until we have... I have a better understanding of where we're going and what we need to do. So I'd be all in favor of sticking with virtual.
Okay, and Attorney Snyder, do you see any issues with that?
No, I don't. I think the policy you've adopted just would be something you would want to abide by now as you move forward, even with your completely virtual meetings.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, and we'll probably just put it on as a standing agenda item until we'll monitor the situation. So we'll go on to the next item then, and that would be item new business, which is R119 of 2021. And this one here is coming from Stoughton Utilities. Alder Person Haley.
I believe the chair is...
It's Vinegas. It's Rachel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alder Person Vinegas.
No problem. I'm on my phone. But I can see the screen. There we go. This is R119 of 2021, authorizing the amendment of a platted sanitary sewer easement from an unstated width to 12 feet on Lot 2 of Mrs. Sarah E. Turner's addition to 19 East Taff Street. I so move.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Vinegas. Do you want to give us a quick overview, or you can turn it over to...
Um... Who do we have on? I'll turn it over.
Director Weiss is on here. Director Weiss is on here.
Thank you. Actually, the property owners at 219 East Taff Street reached out really following our sewer replacement last year. We found that actually in that process, we have a few easements that are very well documented. And then we also have very much in this property situation, it was a blanket easement that actually covers the entire lot. We reviewed this internally. We had the attorney review this as well. We're comfortable with this and would recommend the 12 feet as opposed to a blanket easement that goes over the entire lot. The reason for the 12 feet is really the house is within was it's actually 15 feet of the property line. And this allows us to still have access in there to do any repairs that we would need. The great thing too is the work we did last year is that we did a casing. So our pipe actually sits within that casing. So if we ever in the future need to actually do any maintenance on that pipe, that does allow for us to do that a little bit easier than we would without that casing. So I just feel this is appropriate as opposed to a blanket easement over the entire lot.
All right, any questions for Director Weiss? None, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is regarding the Opera House. And we had some conversations with the friends of the Opera House and our city attorneys. And we put together an agreement that will basically allow the Opera House to, the friends of the Opera House to use the the remodeled rooms that are up there for concessions. And basically, we set it up until the end of the year at a flat rate of $150 per show. I know AJ was also involved in putting together some insurance documents to make sure that everything was covered during the process. And then what we would do is we reevaluate how this MOU is working at the end of the year after they've done, you know, some shows. We can have some information to work with moving forward. So the agreement is in the packet here. Is there anything Attorney Schneider that you want to cover as part of this? I think it's, we tried to keep it as simple as we could.
Right, I think the only piece of this that I would just point out is if I recall correctly, this was a condition of their receiving a class B fermented beverage license. So without this approval, they can't operate because they will not have been issued that license.
Are there any questions from council members?
Tim, how did the the flat rate of 150 per event come about in discussion? What what is that? What would that money cover?
So what we did is last year at budget time, just to have kind of a placeholder in the budget in anticipation of this, we budgeted $8,000 of revenue toward the city. And the Opera House is planning on doing 54 shows. So if you do 54 times $150, it come up to 8,000.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would undertake a motion. It didn't really come out of the committee. I think the closest one would be the Opera House.
Question by Alder Hunt.
Okay, sorry, I can't see everybody on my screen here. Go ahead.
I was just wondering in reference to Attorney Schneider's comment, has the Opera House obtained their class B liquor license?
I believe they have. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just based on a review of your minutes, it looks like they applied for a fermented malt beverage license. And that was issued conditionally. And the condition is having this MOU signed. So once this is given effect, then technically, yes, they can operate under their license as long as they've received it from the city clerk.
Okay, good.
Okay, who else did I miss? Alder Person Legaki.
Um, just knowing what's all going to be potentially sold, this is for before, during, and after shows, correct?
Yeah, I would say it's mostly for before and during the show intermission, not so much afterward. Usually afterward, they focus on the meet and greets with the artists and the merchandise. I guess they'll kind of play it by ear, but I think the idea is to is to have people come to Stoughton earlier. They can take a stroll through the Opera House, maybe grab a beverage or get their concessions, go down on Main Street, have dinner, whatever they want to do, some shopping throughout town, maybe come back, they could have a beverage or go find their seats. You know, so I think it gives people an opportunity to enhance their experience, not only for the Opera House, but really for for Stoughton as a whole.
And then agreed. And just wanted to make sure though, it was before, during, after. And then um, the merchandise of the artists. I know that the memorandum states this doesn't cover that, but it also doesn't exclude it anyway. Right in the same way, the artists and the people, if they have any merchandise to sell, that that could be done even though this memorandum is entered into, correct?
Yeah, we did have some language in there that talked about merchandise. And we wanted to make sure that it didn't get confusing because the artists typically have their own merchandise. And then the Opera House has theirs. So you know, those are separate, separate entities. Artists typically keeps whatever they sell, and then the Opera House would would keep what they're selling. So we we believe that the agreement, you know, covers that distinction.
Thank you very much. And I'm so glad to see this moving forward.
I have a question. Are people allowed to take their beverages into the actual Opera House? Or they have to consume everything before they enter where their seats are?
They will not be able to go into the room with the beverage. So they can typically, they'll be down where the city offices were in that area there. And and you might have heard that they're going to require people that are attending the show to be vaccinated and masked in the actual room where the event is held. In the general area where they can get concessions, don't necessarily have the mask in there, but they still have to have, you know, their card to get in to the facility. And we're starting to see more facilities doing that since the Opera House announced that. I know Summerfest announced today that they're going to have some limitations unless you're under 12. But if you're under 12 there, you you still have to wear a mask. So my grandson's excited he'll be able to go see Kiss.
So is grandpa.
I think I'm sitting this one out. Any other questions or comments? All right. So at this point, I guess I would undertake a motion.
I'll make that.
Second.
Motion by Doom and a second by Reeves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None oppose that motion carries. All right, thank you. Next is the the Race Track Park Master Plan. And I think we have a guest on here. Director Glenn, do you want to do the introduction?
Sure. So we contracted with MSA, who you might be familiar with. They did the master plan for Mint Park for the Race Track Park Master Plan. And Dan Schmidt is on here, and he's going to do a presentation about how the master plan came to fruition.
You want to make, you want me to make Dan the presenter then?
Yeah, that's probably the best.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Dan mentioned, this is a presentation on the Race Track Park Master Plan. We started the process in January and February and have just completed it in the last month or so. Look through a little history of the park itself and then jump into some of the process. So the main park and first ball fields were developed in the early 90s. And in 2000, you can see what exists of most of the existing infrastructure. As you go into current aerial from 2020, several parking lots, four baseball fields, playground, basketball courts, open green space for athletic soccer, flag football, that a crab apple orchard, a small garden plot. And then within the park itself is also Stoughton Utilities Water Tower and easement. As we showed in the the slide before, most of the pavement is approaching 20 years old or older and is in need of replacement in most of the parking areas. So I think the process came about to to start to look at what needs to be done to the park overall as Race Track Road is up for repaving in a in a year or two. And trying to be able to start prioritizing the projects as other work is being done to capitalize on mobilizations for those projects to help with costs for improving Race Track Park. Overall, the park is well used and well liked. Like I said, it's it's starting to show its age. Some existing photos of the parking lots, the top image is the large lot on the northwest corner. The newest lot, which is in the bottom left picture, is put in in mid 2000s. That lot is in good shape. It should should last a while still, but the remaining lots are due for paving. The ball fields themselves are still in pretty good shape. Concessions building itself is no longer meeting the overall needs of the park. And in discussions with some of the stakeholder groups, this doesn't lack the the amenities going forward to be able to host tournaments or or other events there. The ADA audit that was conducted last year also found numerous ADA deficiencies. So there's some work that could be done there as playing as moving forward with that. The ball fields themselves do not have covered dugouts and bleachers are well aged, all things that were identified by some of the stakeholders. As with parking lots, the existing place structure is kind of nearing the end of its useful life. And let's see, some of the green space there is well utilized and is any other green space in the city very valuable to direct programming. So one of the first parts of the project was public surveys. Dan and Tony sent out survey to the residents to just get an idea on some of the characteristics that people like about the park, things that they are interested in. Obviously, some of the top things, walking softball, baseball are pretty self evident. And then the overall structure of the park. But does does play into the needs for the community and how this facility will serve recreation needs going forward. We had several stakeholder meetings held online via Zoom due to COVID. We met with Stoughton Area Little League, youth softball, high schools, athletic director, men's softball, Chamber of Commerce. And then we also had a separate meeting with kind of the direct neighbors of the park as well, many who are from the town of Dunkirk. But knowing this park does directly impact many of the neighbors as well and trying to hear some of what they had to say. And the stakeholders all kind of said, echoed the same things we heard from the survey, the park as well, well liked and well used, but is ready for ready for some upgrades. Some of the concerns from the neighbors are parking along Race Track Road. Parking lots are kind of confusing to get in and out of, not well marked. So when you have larger events, people end up just kind of parking on the road as a kind of last resort of we need to get parked quick and and get into the event and can't always find elsewhere to go. Because there's no kind of circulation through the park and signage is lacking. As well as some issues with kind of the way the ball fields are set up and and proximate the property lines and balls getting chased into ten yards. Overall, the concerns were were mild. The neighbors enjoy the park. Many that were there took up time walking through the park, playing on the playground with their their kids. So it's a it's a well-used community asset. The process itself went through several concepts to draft master plan, ultimately to the master plan that you see on the screen now. In the process, it was identified that there's two parcels that are interested in possible acquisition. One being on the south side off of Academy Street. Residential parcel. And then on the west side of the park, some agricultural land up against Veterans Road that the city has discussed at one time or another with those landlords as possible acquisition and expansion of Race Track Park. Having those two acquisition areas opens up a lot of opportunity to expand the amount of ball fields and fit two additional full 300 foot ball fields in that western parcel, as well as being able to be more flexible with the athletic space. Right now, you could fit one larger field or several youth fields. This would be able to provide the opportunity for two larger fields, which can still be broken down. And and really is just based on the programming for whatever given season is is going on, whether it's youth soccer or flag football or or other events. So within that, it's maintaining a balance of of parking and utilitarian kind of assets. So maintaining that green space, whether it's for warm-up time for baseball games or softball games, or just kind of green passive space to use, that was still a priority. So the focus is developing a core of four really nice ball fields with covered dugouts, improved bleachers with ADA access, some additional shade shelters for for spectators as well as those using the fields, improved batting cages, and the potential to upgrade the concessions facility. And as we'll get into when we talk about the phasing, that's something that show an enlarged facility. But as the process moves forward and this starts to work into CIPs and planning, that could be reevaluated and and look at possible renovations at that time. Given the input from the stakeholders, an enlarged facility that has a bit more flexibility would be preferred. But it it certainly comes down to to budget at the time of construction and being able to get the most out of of the facility structurally, it's all right. It's just functionally, it doesn't have enough space. There's not enough restrooms. The restrooms aren't completely ADA accessible. So there is some work to be done as that moves forward. One of the other additions to the park is kind of congregating some of the the other non-programmed athletic spaces into kind of a quasi neighborhood park. So be adding an additional picnic shelter, covered picnic shelter, just open sided with a small restroom facility, new enlarged playground, potentially something inclusive like at Nordic Ridge. And then a multi-sport court where you could have possibility to have tennis, basketball, pickleball, and some other games kind of all striped on one court. So you're able to maximize the amount of uses within a smaller footprint, your room for volleyball courts if those are still desired. And then that all becomes kind of a secondary core in the center of the park. So you'll be able to users who are there to, or it's family members of kids playing games are able to kind of utilize that space as well as the neighbors can and use that as their own kind of neighborhood park within the larger community park itself. On the western side, being able to expand to get up to six ball fields to allow flexibility for larger tournament events. Maybe a potential for another concession stand and storage building off the parking lot, as well as planning ahead for stormwater management as we're looking at the additions and enlargement of parking lot. And then a new And then a new entrance off of Veterans Road to provide another access into the park. One other item to note is in the current comprehensive plan. I think that show Vernon Street as a through from Veterans Road to racetrack road. So we do have that dashed in as a potential future improvement and all the amenities are positioned in a way that if that route was to. Go in and things are designed as planned, there would be no or minimal impact on the other infrastructures. It'd be likely realignment of the entrance off on to better Vernon Street. On the north and being able to kind of change how that drive comes in off of racetrack now, which would be a benefit to kind of visibility of of the parking areas. Long term. And then improve crossing that and burn it better road. The connection also does lead to an extension of the proposed trail network through the site. When there comes up Moline or Veterans Road and they could cut through the kind of center of the park. And connect over to the existing trail and racetrack road. That overall connection again is is in the comprehensive plan and not direct plans. So looking at making sure that that connection is made and the trails within the park for the most part are are ten feet wide, there would be a. Loop that's a twelve foot wide for for maintenance to get down kind of from the north to the south and accessing the ball fields and. Be here is a larger storage facility, maintenance shop where they could have the field streets. Storage for bulk materials for the ball fields and other equipment and that could also take up some of the storage for. What's kind of a several shed they're kind of thrown out throughout the park now for some of the the park users. So as you're looking at phasing, the first items would be general improvements to the ball fields. As well as looking at that that southern acquisition. And Dan can speak a bit more to kind of what's going on with the process on that right now. But expanding the southern parking lot, adding another entrance drive for better circulation. Repaving the northern parking lot and adding an additional set of bays down the middle, so it kind of maintains its existing footprint. But becomes a little bit more efficient and a little bit larger, improving entry signage. And then the general ball field upgrades, improvements, new fencing, netting on the fields. Look at some many along racetrack road along the E three field here in particular to help to keep balls from. Tracing off into the properties and Anderson there. The second phase would be that neighborhood park core and. The likely addition or in enlargement of the. Concessions building, concession building could certainly go into phase one if the need and funding is there at the time. But trying to look at kind of tolerable chunks to break this down a little bit more. Expanding the parking lot to add additional ADA stalls. And then the shelter playground, multi sport courts. Some additional network of trails to build into that as well as probably ball field lighting. Improvements at time there, there is existing lighting and it probably has enough life to make it through. Until this phase would be completed. And then the final phase would be kind of the overall expansion and most of these features, if that western parcel. Kind of they fell off the table or became. Something the city didn't want to pursue, then some of the additional improvements on the main park, the additional double bay. On the side closest to the water tower wouldn't necessarily have to happen as well as the added parking. On the west side and the lot that comes off of Veterans Road there. Within all the parking lots, we plan to to do some bio swills and stormwater management, just to keep things locally treated. And up to current standards and at the time of design, those would be addressed as stormwater treatment requirements vary. As time goes on, so the master plan has some general placeholders for that, but. That would be all be part of the engineering at the time and then this would have the remaining trails. Additional entry monument on the south side of Veterans Road there. The completion of the last parking loops, refinement of the stormwater areas and basins. And then the two the two new ball fields as well. With that, that's general presentation, are there any questions, I can go back to any of the slides if there's anything in particular. Yes.
I was wondering, how many athletic events are we hosting currently? That require more than the four athletic fields, baseball field, any idea?
I don't know if we got a specific number. It was identified through the athletic stakeholders that there is certainly growth and. Capacity within those groups to utilize those fields if they became available. With other pieces consider with that, Matt Park Master Plan has elimination of the ball field. As well as the joint park field is kind of. Beautiful life and tend to be fairly wet and soggy, so there's two ball fields that are coming out of circulation within the city. And the ability to combine all the uses here in proximity to public works. For fulfilled maintenance. Is kind of the driver of of that desire for expansion and additional fields. So I don't know if we have a specific number of tournaments, maybe Dan knows offhand how many. Happen in a given season. But there there definitely is enough use or enough desire out there to to be able to utilize those going forward if they are implemented.
Just one other kind of little nitpicky thing on that part of the projects. Shouldn't your P four parking be flipped with the storm waters so that the parking is closer to the athletic field?
Ideally, it could do that, the driveway would come in a little bit more of a. An angle there, that's also meant to serve somewhat as a secondary lot for. Park users who might be going in that kind of central core. So it's certainly something that as it's planned out in the future could be could be looked at. But the the alignment was to make a better intersection at Moline and Veterans Road. So we didn't put a driveway off off center there, but to a certain extent. You could flip flop those two just with a change in the driveway potentially and that's. Something that can be looked at during further design development.
One last question about that part of the project, any idea what acquisition cost would be for that piece of property?
Based on the city's current. Park fee, it would be about nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that. That obviously would be negotiation and determination of what the value is and working through. The city, I know there's been some discussions recently on that southern parcel. For the addition, I don't know where that stands and I don't know if Dan has any more information on that at this time. But the the estimate would be about nine hundred and twelve thousand or so.
Okay.
I think it's about seventy six thousand dollars an acre. And we're about eleven acres of expansion there.
Alright.
One comment in with the the whole master plan, I know that this is just a a planning and or visioning document. Based on like how the the new design architectural design of the concession stands. And perhaps some of the pavilion areas, the larger pavilion areas, something maybe to. Include in our newly formed sustainability committee would be. Seeing what feasibility would be for solar panels for some of those really flat roof spaces. And or potentially for the the very large parking area that would be in there.
Yeah, certainly could be consideration and we have a just an example here shown of a of a large flat roof structure which. At least one of those roofs would be a great application potentially for solar panels and other things to help mitigate some of the. Electrical uses in there and certainly lots of other options as you're getting into design can be considered with the architectural design.
And one other point based on some of the feedback that you got from the community on there. About lighting in general around the park and that it it tends to be kind of dark and and. I've even spoken with some of the residents that live around there and they're. Always vigilant as watching what's going on within the park in the dark.
Yep, and I think I don't remember where we have that specifically, I think we included a line item for. At least some path safety lighting, so it wouldn't be. And outside of the times when the ball fields would have potential lighting. There would be the likely opportunity to include. Just some kind of safety lighting to like you said to brighten that up, some of that could as well be solar if you're looking at, there's several solar path lights that work well. As well as many other LED options that are low, low energy usage and and wouldn't be too blinding to all the neighbors.
Okay, thanks, those are my two points.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question.
Oh, go ahead, all the person may ask you.
How much money is in the. In the fund for parkland acquisition right now?
There's um two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in the account right now.
So this plan would take all of that plus needing another six hundred thousand dollars just to. Acquire the property. Am I correct?
At this point, but there will probably be some other. Money in lieu of particularly, you know, it's other developments where there's no parkland available. But at this point, we don't have any dollar amounts or on those. Certainly, our clan acquisition is, you know, is a major cost.
My concern is is that. It's a lot of money put into basically a single use park. Where it is used part of the year, that of the entire year. Where we could use that money for opportunities in some of the new growing sections of the community. To develop better linear parks with recreational nodes. You know, majority, majority of park users are not. Are not the. It's not, it's not all sports oriented recreational activity. So there's a lot of non sport recreational activity and passive use. And I'm not sure if this is really a good use of or a. A wise use, effective use of resources. Or recreational use which we already have. In place, we're concentrating it all in one area and not spreading it out throughout the community and allowing. You know, we're basically creating recreational deserts and parks in the community for this type of activity, so. Just putting that out there that. I'm not necessarily comfortable with this amount of land purchased for single use outdoor recreation activity.
Can I respond to that?
You can do anything you'd like.
Those are nice about it.
Well, I just wanted to let Aldo Mayeski know that we did do a core plan that did. Identify that we need community parks. Um, this is not a single use, it has very multi sports and other activities and trails. We try to make it as inclusive of many different activities. We got volleyball, we got tennis, we got pickleball, yes, and we also have passive use with a lot of the trails and. Everything going around it, yes, it's not green space or natural areas. But it is, it doesn't meet the needs of a lot of things that the community identified. We are not creating deserts, in fact, if you look at any of the other development going in, we have beautiful parks going into all those. That are connected to trails and in fact, this one. Because of the leadership of. Elder Caravelo, we do have, you know, hoping that that the trail is connected into there as well. So it's going to be on the trail system, it is what a community park is supposed to do. And we do have other beautiful parks proposed in newer developments. Throughout the city, so there isn't really a desert unless you go into my neighborhood, which the only park is Crystal Park. But it's a historic neighborhood and they weren't thinking about those things back then, um, so. I guess I think the Park and Recs Committee did a great job and. I mean, they really listened to the constituents and through the survey and our our corp report, so. That's what I have to say.
Alright, anybody else have any questions or comments or suggestions?
Have a question.
Sure.
On the list of expenses that we would experience. I don't see anything for remodeling the concession stand. Nor do I see anything for a second concession stand, are those included there and I'm just missing them?
Yes, they are, so on phase two. Well, I shouldn't say it's phase two shows a replacement number as a as a placeholder. At the Parks Media, there was discussion about maybe that becomes a remodel. And at that time, when that those decisions are being made, that that could be determined. If the programming at the time allows and analysis determines that it's feasible and. Cost effective to remodel that structure rather than replace it and obviously that number would come down significantly. But to replace with what we heard from the stakeholders would be desirable for for amount of space, amenities, storage. And other features. That's the the line item that was included and then the secondary. Smaller concessions building is in phase three. There is a line item. Towards the bottom here. And that building be a little bit smaller. This more of a secondary structure concessions, some storage restrooms as well to serve those. Other ball fields, trying to spread the use out a little bit, so you have that main quadplex in the center and then you'd have. An opportunity for some kind of picnic space and things outside of of that. Kind of concessions building park shelter, so that you're not just setting it up to be only used. That handful of times in the summer when there's when there's large games, but it could really be a space that gets used outside of of baseball season. Or outside of baseball hours and that as well, it'd be close to the parking lots and be accessible for. For multiple different users to get in. So if you want to have showers, birthday parties, other things there, you'd be able to utilize that space as well, so that would be.
Yeah. So adding phase three at five and a half million, phase two about four and a half million. And then phase one about two point seven, we're at a right kind of pushing up against thirteen million for all three phases.
Yeah, that's up above right, we we have some high contingencies in there as this is a master plan. And on some uncertainty on how exactly the features would be built. Ground conditions and other things that could have potential costs in there, certainly as the plans evolve and. The city starts to undertake these things, things like the existing concessions building being remodeled would reduce costs and. You'd certainly look at the needs. Depending on, I mean, phase three would be a number of years out, we have a placeholder of twenty twenty seven, but. And talking with Dan, they would probably be longer than that before that would get developed, there might be a time that. Before that would get developed, there might be a time that. The needs for baseball in the next decade drop off and maybe that gets reevaluated to be more passive green space. So there's often opportunities to reevaluate these phases as you move forward. And the cost may not be exactly what you what you see here, but we try to give you kind of a little called a worst case scenario, but a high end estimate so that. You can see what. To get the amenities that everyone's looking forward to create kind of the ideal. Functioning park would cost. But there is certainly room to to value engineer to reassess priorities at any given time. As you move forward. So there's no looking at this plan or proving this plan doesn't lock the city into any particular spending. Just an assessment of of our best guests looking forward as to what the uses. And needs may be to start planning so that if if that route comes forward, the funding is available. The city has a plan to to move forward into that.
The plan doesn't really account for any type of revenue that would be brought into as far as naming rights or sponsorships or those types of things. And based on other local. I think county sport complexes like this. That have recently completed, they have been getting substantial amount of money for these naming rights and sponsorships.
Okay. It looks like a really fine plan. Pretty pricey though.
This is. And I guess I would just personally find it. Difficult to vote in favor. Without numbers supporting. The park usage and. You know, bringing people to town. It just. Is. Or is really. And kind of why if whether or not the plan can be done. Purchasing the additional land. The number is. Just very, very high to for me to make a decision without more information.
Any other thoughts or comments?
If I could, Tim.
Sure, Aldo Kristen Johnson.
Yeah, I I think that what we're forgetting is that this is just it's a concept. It's something that's being put out there as this is what we would like to do. The numbers will come together as it goes forward, if it goes forward. And I think all we're looking for tonight is just a tentative approval. Of of the concept and and that's it. And then the rest of it will work itself out whether we can come up with them with the money or not with we're can. If we can cut some corners someplace, do something a little bit different that would save some money. All of that will come. Through the process. So I think it's it's. If if we feel that it's is a worthy project to try and move forward on. We should vote for it. If you don't feel it's a worthy project, then you should vote against it.
Any other questions and comments? I mean, for my part, I've had the good fortune of. Following Little League and various communities this year and. You know, if you go to Oregon, you can you can see and read how much they just invested in their J C Park there. Kind of scroll just did a huge project. I think the other one is in the forest and. I I think you're you're seeing this in communities throughout Wisconsin. And really even throughout the country where. In order to be competitive, you have to be able to provide amenities for people to want to live in your community. And for people to come and visit and and spend money in your community. And certainly. You know, when we look at these projects, we're we're kind of just. Talking to stakeholders and putting together the wish list and putting it out there and. You know, as we go through the process, I think. You know, a lot of decisions will be made by council whether or not to execute all our parts of these plans. So but I certainly understand that it's a it's a huge cost of doing business. Certainly, expansion of this part does create efficiencies, as mentioned earlier, is because of its relationship to. The public works garage. So, you know, I think that, you know, overall, I like the plan as far as implementation. You know, this, once again, you know, it could be a multi year project. Could be a multi decade project. You just really don't know how things are gonna shake out as you're going forward on these, but. You know, the key thing I think that was mentioned is is you really want to have a plan. So if a group wants to come in and say, hey, I want to put in a batting cage. Or we want to plant trees or we want to do upgrades, at least we have a placeholder and we can identify where to put something so we don't end up. Putting something in an area where it really doesn't make long term sense. And then you have to turn around and redo it and it it'll waste time and money. At that point. So I think that, you know, having these plans are certainly beneficial as we. Try to phase into them. So. Appreciate the presentation and the work that was done by the committee. Any other questions for for? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say it's kind of a footnote, but it has occurred to me since a lot of us bike. And walk a lot that our parks. I think if if they were promoted in a particular way, and I'd have to talk. To Dan about this, but it has occurred to me that I I use the parks as a destination. That I think we're used to thinking about parks as immediate neighborhood parks. So I just wanted to mention that aspect. That for me, it's a challenge, you know, to go to a park farther away. Or in this case, it's an ideal bike destination for me.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts or questions or? All right, I guess you can turn the screen back over to me at this point and then I'll put up what we have in the packet for. A resolution. And this resolution did come through Park and Recreation, so it would be all the person Caravelo.
Yep, um, yeah, this is. Resolution one twenty one of twenty twenty one, and it is a resolution to adopt the racetrack park master plan and. I very much move. And support. The adoption of this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
I heard all the person Jensen. Any more discussion? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the eyes have I heard one opposed. That motion does carry. Next item is R one twenty two. And we appreciate Kelly's patience here tonight. This one here is coming from Public Safety. All the person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety recommends approval of resolution one twenty two twenty twenty one. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary class B wine retail license. And special event license to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for the Stoughton Wine Walk, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Second by all the person Doom, all the person Jensen.
Yeah, this is. Annual event now. I know the chief didn't have any issues with it. We didn't find any any problems. Cal did a real good job of. Of putting her package together. Her package is all in the in the in our package. For your review, and I would highly recommend approval.
All right. Anything you want to say, Kelly? You've been waiting all night.
No, thank you. I do see that on the cover letter, though I I failed to update that to the twenty twenty one date, so it would be for October fourteenth, twenty twenty one. But thank you. I'm presenting Wine Walk event to you this evening. The Wine Walk Event Committee is excited to bring you the downtown shopping event back after a year I hate us. Which funds a chamber scholarship fund, which is two one thousand dollar scholarships to graduating high school seniors. So I just appreciate your time taking a look this over and thank you.
Any questions or comments from others? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, R one twenty three. Of twenty twenty one. This one comes from Finance Committee. All the person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. R one twenty three twenty twenty one is a resolution authorizing. City officials to amend the twenty twenty one C I P budget utilizing fifty five thousand nine hundred six dollars. From technology funds and twenty five thousand in contingency funds to upgrade the city's storage area network or SAN. Finance approved this one August fourth unanimously, and I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves, all the person Schumacher.
I will have Director Montgomery go over that because there are particular things about that and why there is an impetus to to move this forward quickly.
All right, Director Montgomery, are you on here?
Yes, I am. Basically, what I'm trying to do here is take advantage of our financial situation where it is the end of the fiscal year for the manufacture of this product. And normally a recent retails for a hundred and one thousand dollars, but we can get it for forty eight thousand, I believe. So that's that's why I'm hoping was hoping to do it this year rather than my C I P for next year. And if it was approved this year, it would then come out of next year's C I P budget. It would be not only for the storage area network, which is the high ticket discount, but also upgrading the. Post environment that holds all of the virtual servers.
All right, any questions or comments from elders at this point? All right, I'm hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is coming from Public Safety. And this one's Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety recommends approval of resolution one twenty four twenty twenty one. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue an operator's license for Amelia Carr, and I would vote for approval.
Second by all the personal agaki, all the person Jensen.
Yeah, this was a license, operator's license. We listened to Amelia's. Information about her background and everything. Originally, this was. Recommended as a denial from Chief Leck. But due to the circumstances, we felt that she was worthy of the operator's license and we voted to approve it.
Any questions or comments from elders?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is Chief Leck available to explain his objections?
Yes, you have. My reasoning in your packet and what I did not have at the time of the. Public Safety Committee meeting was a disposition on the felony charge, which the subject had. Participated in the first offenders program and that was reduced. And that wasn't available to me in the record as it wasn't updated in the system.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Very none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is also from Public Safety. All the person Jensen.
Okay, this would be. Let's see, next one, okay. A recommendation recommendation from the Public Safety Committee to deny the operator's license. This is for resolution one twenty five twenty twenty one approving an operator license for. Berhana Patronus, and I would move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, and it's it's, you know, obviously it's confusing. We have to do this in the positives, even though it's it was a denial boat coming out of Public Safety. So. If the council agrees, they would vote no. If they wish to give her a license, you'd vote yes. This was something that the chief. Due to the record. Recommended denial and the committee agreed and voted. For the denial.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
Put my camera on. No, no camera.
All right, here are no questions. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And. And any opposed?
No.
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 No. No.
Okay, I believe that knows the days have it.
Yeah, that's my mistake. I voted aye and I but mine's a no vote.
This is a no vote. Okay, so the nose habits, so this has been denied.
Mayor, I think Rachel had a question. No.
It was correctly resolved just then, so.
Okay. All right, I didn't get to count on that. Were you able to get that, Chairman?
Sorry, I. I think I might have missed. Miss voted as well.
All right, we'll do.
Great.
Just do a re vote.
We'll do it again. All all in favor, say aye. And those opposed, say no.
Oh.
No.
No.
All right. That was a little bit more clear that time.
Yeah.
Next item is also from Public Safety. All the person Jensen and Rachel can help walk us through this one if you'd like.
Okay, well, I should I introduce this first? Then I think if I introduce it, then Rachel can. Put her two cents worth in and try and explain it a little bit better than I could.
Yeah, but it'll be more than two cents worth, believe me.
Okay. Yeah, probably at that their their cost, yes. All right, so this is resolution one twenty six twenty twenty one approving a liquor license for Pamela Kosnovich. And Public Safety Committee recommended denial six old boat July twenty eight, twenty twenty one. And I would recommend approval.
Anyone has any question?
All right, so there's there's a motion for approval of this one. Is there a second?
By.
Okay, second by Legaki, and then we'll open it up for questions and then Attorney Schneider can walk us through kind of the whole story. Anything else you want to add, Aldo Kristen Jensen?
Yeah, I just if I'll put my. My thoughts in first. This was this was something where Mayor Shands had applied for a license and. Miss Kosnovich also applied for the light for the same license. And at our at our meeting, our public safety meeting, we originally had given it to Mayor Shands. But then due to a technicality, he couldn't accept the license, and so he withdrew his request. And that's why it is now coming forward with Miss with approving the license for Miss Kosnovich. And I guess Rachel can go ahead and explain a little bit further technicalities on that.
Right, okay, so the issue at Public Safety is that a class. Right, okay, so the issue at Public Safety is that a Class B liquor license is something that's subject to a quota under state law, and there was one license that became available, and two applicants applied for that license almost at exactly the same time. And there is a timeline, or there should be a timeline in the packet that Candy Kristen put together about the day she received the applications. Looking at state law and looking at student ordinances did not provide any guidance about how Public Safety and the council is supposed to handle nearly simultaneous applications for a single license. So Public Safety made a decision, any decision that's essentially based on non-discriminatory reasons and is supported by a rational basis, is arguably within the city council's authority to make. So Public Safety made a recommendation to approve the license for Marshans. And as Alder Jensen indicated, then subsequently recommended denial of the application for Ms. Kosinovich on the basis that, at that point, there wouldn't be another license available. Subsequently, the owner of Marshans learned that the Department of Revenue interprets state law to mean that a winery, which is what Marshans is classified as under state law, is not an entity that can possess the Class B license he applied for and continue to manufacture their product. So if he were to obtain the Class B license that he applied for, he would no longer be qualified for the permit from the state to manufacture his product, which would completely undermine his entire business. So he did withdraw his application. And now before you is one application for one available liquor license from Ms. Kosinovich. So options for the committee tonight are to deny that application, to approve the application, or to send it back to C A C P for further consideration if the council believes that the initial review was perhaps not thorough enough, or if there are any open questions.
One further comment, if I could, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I would prefer that we do not send it back to Public Safety. It was very obvious that if we had two licenses, both of them would have gotten a license. It was a difficult decision, just going the way we did. So I feel very confident that the committee would ultimately approve the license for Ms. Kosinovich. So and they can verify that, you know, if they wish. But I would like to just see this go through tonight with an approval of the license.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, the reason it got interesting is because, you know, there was only one license available without paying the additional ten thousand dollars for whoever didn't get it. That part has been taken out of the equation with the withdrawal from Marshans. Regardless, we know we're going to have to go back to the committee and do some work on our ordinance. And I know Rachel's excited to start that process because we want to avoid this situation from happening again in the future, and at least have some clarity of what the process will look like if it does, as well as we do have a provision that states that the licensee has to be cannot be closed for more than sixty consecutive days, and we don't really define that very well either, so we have work to do in that area as well. So you'll probably be hearing about that at a future meeting, but for tonight, we really just, you know, want to take action on this applicant. So that's kind of the the short version of the story. We spent a fair amount of time on it. Candy did a terrific job of communicating and getting clarification from the D O R on this really fine print in a state statute, which one could even say has other language that conflicts with it. But at the end of the day, Candy was able to, you know, get the right people on the phone, and really all of us to get through this process. So it was definitely an experience, but here we are. Any questions or comments on this? Legaki, and then Chief Leck.
I'm sending it back to committee and trying to make sense of it. I I'm very happy that we can go forward and hopefully approve this from Ms. Pasternovich tonight. But I also just sort of want to say Marshans and our current laws and this fine print and conflicting information are a justice issue. He wants to sell his product and hopefully be able to stay open later than nine o'clock at night, and other establishments can if they have the right license. And so we have these conflicting issues with these licenses that are what's legislated to us right now, and I just think it's lousy, the situation that Marshans had found themselves in as they were trying to be proactive and align their businesses as well as they could. So hats off to both business owners. We felt that at committee. But these laws feel a bit archaic and don't appear to be serving all of our small businesses well.
Thank you for that, Jean, and I'll tell you, I do have a meeting next week with State Senator Agard, and this is one of the things on my list, to at least bring it to her attention, so she can maybe provide some guidance on this issue and at least be aware of it as an issue. Obviously, we were not going into this, and now we are. Chief, did you have something you wanted to share with us?
Yeah, the only concern I have is the premise description. Because there is a C attached amendment to it, it makes it very unclear what exactly is being defined as the premise, especially as it relates to the carriage house. And I'd sure like to see that cleared up with a contingency or something before you approve this license, because I think we have to be a little more specific when it comes to the premise description.
And I guess I would ask Pam, I know you were unavailable. Are you able to to respond to that?
Yes, I I was fishing. I apologize. I couldn't be at the last meeting. So I had someone to represent me and my my family. We were fishing with our eighty-seven-year-old father who must go to Alaska and fish every year, and nothing in the world is more important than that. So the premises has been kind of a dive bar for many, many, many years. And I bought the building. You all know that, right? There were a lot of improvements made in the last ten years. The bar, but it needs a lot more. And we bought the building because I got married in December to a man who is lived right across the street from City Hall. And we've been together for five years, and I saw the building and I loved it. It needed, I'm one of those visualizers. I was like, this could be such a great building. And we bought the building thinking that the liquor license came with it. And running a bar wasn't our first priority. It was maintaining and getting the building back into shape, because it was in bad shape. We wanted to maintain the liquor license, and we have friends that have run bars. I've worked in bars, but I've never been a resident of Stoughton, so I don't know how strict the laws are here. So we really wanted to get the building in the best shape that could. And we contracted Dom, you know, the kitchen place, to design a new kitchen for us, because there was never been a kitchen in that place. And our main goal is not to compete with the other restaurants, because we were friends with Bike, at Bike King. We had dinner at Wendy Go tonight and got caught in that storm on our way home. That's why it looks so beautiful. And we, you know, we go to all the local restaurants because we live downtown. But we want to make sure that the building is restored. I restore buildings. We want to make sure that it is safe. And we want to offer something different. And my husband and I are older, and we can't eat cheese curds every night. We can't eat chicken or burgers. We have to really watch our carbs. And so our goal was our goal, and I think we handed out or Timmy did what we have in mind for our restaurant. And it's something different. We don't want to compete with our friends' businesses. We want to maybe have some, it's a big enough space to have live local music. And I think it would be great to have that in our town and to make that space look better. It's been really run down and dilapidated for many years. And it's a fantastic building. It really is. So that's our goal. And that's why we really wanted to keep our liquor license. And we thought we could transfer it, but then we understood that we couldn't get it reapply. So we weren't super aggressive about it, because we would support Marshans. We have talked to Bike King and Bike about doing a custom beer for us, partnering with our friends in town, and we, John, my husband, I lived in Stoughton for, I don't know, how many years have you lived there? Twenty-five? A long time, he said. And I love the village, it's right. He raises some here, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So I guess specifically, Chief, what were you looking for on the premises? Because I don't know if we really got that.
No.
No, I think if we go back to the original application that was in there, that's what the traditional, the previous license holder had, which gives a fairly good indication. It shows the all liquor and vinyl beer and wine contained behind the bar, including the four coolers, additional stock of beer can be stored in the basement, a walk-through coolers in the basement. I think that's the language you're looking for. I think if you put that amendment document involved there, then that just, I mean, alcohol's throughout the entire complex of the building, and I don't think that's what we need for a focused premise description.
We were very descriptive with Candy about where we thought it was going to be stored. We do have a walk-in cooler for that's connected to the taps with the beer. And it's in the basement, and we have two under counter coolers for beer or whatever, and then we have a one stand-up cooler. And we have gone back and forth many times. Times the skirt liquor would be some liquor that doesn't have to be refrigerated, maybe behind the bar or under barback. We have a barback that's amazing from nineteen thirty-three. And it's enormous, and there's cabinets under it, and there's more storage in New Haven. We don't think that there would be any need to have additional storage.
Pamela, you've locked up.
All right, well, while we're waiting for it to reboot, is there some language that you think you'd like to see in there, Chief? Or?
Tim, could we just, could we do this with a caveat or that we approve it with a contingency that the licensee comes forward with a site plan that would be approved by the chief?
I guess I would defer that to Attorney Schneider.
I wouldn't recommend that route. I think just for the committee or the council's background on this, the issue is that a license, under state law, a license needs to particularly describe the premises where alcohol will be served, stored, and consumed. And if the council issues a license with a very broad description, it's not something the council can ever take back without consent from the license holder.
Okay, so what we need to do then is we need to table this and have them come work with the with the chief and with the clerk to have that type of language within the license application and then bring it back. I don't know if it would need to come back to committee before it goes to council, but I think that it would be fine if it went right straight to council after that, but I don't know. It depends upon what the rest of the council feels, if they want this to go back to committee first, and then we would bring it forward.
I think Chief Leck is trying to say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the language that's in the six twenty, or the, get the date again. It's the one that's dated six fifteen twenty-one. That has language that's consistent with what was there previously. The seven one twenty-one document shows in red this amendment made on seven twenty-one. That's the part that I'm not comfortable with. So if we go back to the original application that's dated six twenty-one, that's typical fine, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know whether Rachel has an issue as well.
My only concern, Chief, is I think what you're referencing is the handwritten description and not the portion of it that's typed. So it would be just that portion of it, because arguably, if you were to approve a premises description that includes the typed portion of that, you're approving service, storage, and consumption of alcohol in the living quarters of that premises.
Correct.
So I guess the question at this point is, should we have them fill out a new application, or what do you think the best route would be, Attorney Schneider?
Well, I think you can, what's the resolution that you have?
I think I think what we need to do here is I'm going to move to table this and send it back to committee, and then have the chief and the clerk work with the applicant, and make sure we get this straightened out the way we need it, and then bring it back through committee and back to council at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, and I don't think it's time-sensitive, other than the fact that, you know, they want to get it behind, they're not going to be opening tomorrow or anything like that.
Yeah, so I'd do my move to table and bring back to committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Not sure if it was Legaki or Reeves, I'm sorry.
There's fine. Yep, either's fine.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, that motion does carry, and I'll try to, if Pam didn't get back on, I'll try to connect with her tomorrow.
Mayor Swadley, can I ask you a question just for minute purposes?
Sure.
Can I, do I just delete the first motion, or does something have to happen?
No, the table, this table supersedes that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's go to the next item. That would be R one twenty-seven. And this one comes from the Personnel Committee, Alder Person Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the COVID pandemic policy. Personnel Committee recommended approval, five zero, and I so move.
Second by Johnson, Alder Person Reeves.
It's pretty self-explanatory, and we also have Director Gillingham here, but essentially, as it says, the pandemic policy covers time off for quarantine for employees who are vaccinated, have received the first dose of the two-part series, or are unable to vaccinate as advised by their physician, have a physician's note, et cetera. All other employees would need to utilize their own sick vacation and or comp time to cover the quarantine time.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Gillingham?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to this document.
On the second page, we have notes there talking about the steps to take. As you'll notice, this document was approved by the Personnel Committee back on April 5th of 2021. This was presented to you as part of the work rules. That'll be a first reading this evening. Since then, there have been many changes to the developments regarding COVID. So I would ask that under steps to take, we keep the first bullet point that says stay at home and monitor your health. And then the second bullet would be follow the Dane County recommended steps for exposure or positive test results. Everything below that would be struck. Those are old instructions from Dane County regarding what should happen if somebody is exposed.
Do I make that motion or?
Yeah, you would have to make that amendment.
And I agree with that. So I would move to approve that amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. AJ, if you could just forward the language to Jamin.
Absolutely.
All right. Any questions or comments on that amendment? Here are none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That amendment carries. That takes us back to the main motion that's amended. Did you have anything else, Director Gillingham?
No.
Okay. So we're back to the main motion with that amendment. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you. Next one, R128. That one also comes from the Personnel Committee, Alderperson Reeves.
Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve hiring a dedicated utilities finance director who would report to the utilities director. Personnel Committee recommended approval 4.0. This also came to finance, who recommended approval 7.0. And I would move for approval.
I'll second that.
All right. Second by Schumacher. Anything you want to add, Alderperson Reeves or, and/or Schumacher?
Well, just a couple of comments. Actually Brett and I are both on finance and personnel. But, you know, I think the, we all agreed that Jamin's done outstanding jobs juggling the city and utilities, given the scope and magnitude of responsibility. I think it may have been either AJ or Mayor Swadley that said that, you know, anybody else probably could not have managed it. But given the number of projects coming up in both utilities and the city deserving a lot of attention and time, we overwhelmingly agree that it was time for utilities to have a dedicated director.
I agree with all of those statements as well. We talked about it in both committees and definitely came to that conclusion.
Yeah, and it was also discussed and approved at utilities as well. Anything you wanted to add, Director Gillingham?
The only thing I want to make sure everybody understands, this is going back to the initial structure that we had prior to Jamin being promoted into the city position and then also taking with him the utilities role. Again, I want to commend him for the job that he did. It's just as, to reflect on what Alderperson Reeves said, there's just too much there and some major projects coming down the pipeline. Director Weiss definitely needs the support there and having a person on site that is dedicated to her is definitely needed as we move forward through the next couple of years with the projects that they are faced with.
Can we clone Jamin?
We wish.
It's been tried.
I think I might be able to do that.
Great. Anything from Director Weiss on this one?
Nope, I just, I support what everybody has shared us so far. We definitely appreciate everything that Jamin's done. He's done an amazing job. And I don't think anybody else could pull off all that he has. But I think it does make sense for us to make this change. This was, you know, utilities.
And anything from Director Freel?
No, I think everything's been said. It's bittersweet. It was a tough decision to make. But I think long term, the utilities are going to benefit from having a dedicated person down there. So it is time.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments from council members? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you. Next one is from Personnel as well, Alderperson Reeves.
Thank you. Resolution 129, 2021. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve Candy Christian, the existing deputy clerk and interim city clerk to fill the full-time vacancy of city clerk. And Personnel recommended approval 4.0 on August 2nd. And I so move.
Okay.
Second by Alderperson Johnson, Alderperson Reeves.
This position was posted. And the bottom line is that Candy was the most qualified to fill the position. But AJ, you may have something else to add.
Absolutely. I want all of you to understand that Candy had taken a step back when she took the position with the city of Stoughton. She previously was a city clerk for 18 years and in a smaller community. She is now ready to take a step back and step back into that clerk's role. So this is going to be just about like getting a turnkey person, but 18 years of experience. So we're really looking forward to hoping that you move forward on this one and we're able to move her into that position.
When would that move be?
Soon as we have authorization from you.
Ah, effective immediately upon vote. Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And, you know, just from my piece, you know, I just really want to say that we're fortunate to really have a person of Candy's caliber as the deputy clerk. Obviously, you know, AJ and her team did a great job of recruiting for that position when it was available. And, you know, having somebody with experience that can step into this role is really critical. As, you know, we've all seen how the elections have been gone the last few years. And it's a little bit scary. There's a lot of clerks that are getting out of the business right now. So we're fortunate that we had, you know, an excellent clerk with Holly and then somebody that can step into that position. We're really fortunate. Anybody else, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Not opposed, that motion carries. Next item, R130 of 2021. And this one here, it was decided at the committee that we should really just introduce it tonight because there's just so much material there. So I'll let Alderperson Reeves begin that conversation.
Authorizing, this is Resolution 130-2021. Authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve the updated work rules and newly created policies, procedures, and forms manual. And this is a first reading.
All right. Anything you want to add to that? Or would you like Director Gillingham to summarize this?
I think the only thing I would add is that since I've been on council, this has been a work in progress and a tremendous amount of work. AJ has, you know, the HR department has led the charge on this. But both AJ and, you know, just the amount of time it has taken to write and rewrite, Ginny deserves a lot of credit. But there's a lot of people worked behind the scenes to make this happen and spent many hours. So thank you to those who have contributed. But AJ could give us more detail.
Okay. So this is a complete rewrite. That's why you're not seeing a redline version. If you took the time to take a look at the packet, you're going to see that the old document has no reflection on the current document other than the title. We have gone through each and every policy. Steve Zock has looked at our documents as well. And we made the decision to pull the two apart so that the policies, procedures, and forms are more than likely what is going to be updated more often. Therefore, we pulled those separate from the work rules. So the work rules are the actual expectations of employees. And then when you get into the actual policies and procedures and forms, that's the working documentation. Our goal, once this is approved, is to have all of this online. And employees will be able to reference it online as they go throughout their cycle of employment. So we've made major changes to it, as Lisa said. But everything falls within the legal realm. And it finally mirrors the practices within the city of Stoughton and how we do business. The old version that you're going to be looking at, because I did send that to you, that document was updated post Act 10. And literally what happened was they went through and just stripped the Act 10, I'm sorry, stripped out the union wording. And then it was left as the work rules. So there were a lot of, there's a lot of information in there that needed to be updated that really did not follow the practices that management and employees were following.
If I could add a little bit to that, AJ?
Yes.
Yeah, I was on Personnel when that happened. And I believe, matter of fact, I think I was chairing Personnel at that time. And that was, that was something that because of Act 10, we had to work rather quickly. We were only given a certain amount of time to make those changes. And so it was decided to do exactly what you said. It was basically take our union rule and convert them into work rules. It needed, it needed changing. It needed updating a long time ago. And so I'm very glad to see this come to fruition and correct the mistakes or the oversights that we made 10 years ago.
Any other, President Hirsch?
Yeah, and thank you, AJ and everybody else that worked on it. This looks great. I was just, you know, I was reading it, the work rules today. And one, I mean, they all look great except when I got to the workplace violence part of it. I think if somewhere, and I don't, because I'm not the legal person, but one, I would like to see that, you know, no sexual harassment is added to that because that's not included anywhere. And then under implied threats or threatening harassing, this is on page 28, if people want to look at it, harassing telephone calls. I think it's not just telephone calls. It has to be any social media at this point because people could send a text, Facebook, you know, the whole gamut of social media that's out there that people could be harassed or violated again. So those are my two comments, especially with, in light of what happened today and the whole Me Too movement. I would definitely really look at the sexual harassment and part and add that in there somewhere. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Is that something that you can take a look at, AJ? I know this is going to be kind of a working document.
Yeah. So let me, let me talk real quick about that, if that's okay, Mayor Swadley.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. So the plan with this is we're, this will be an ongoing working document. We will be meeting to start with for the first year quarterly to go through the policies and get the feedback from the directors in regards to what they're hearing from their employees and how the policies are working out. All of the directors have had an opportunity to look at this document two times. And we plan on, we have a subject matter expert team that has been looking at this that represents different aspects of our organization. So we will, by all means, be looking at it on a quarterly basis and taking feedback, working with the Personnel Committee to make changes as they need to be made. I think the big part is that we're putting the emphasis on work in progress as we go through this. Otherwise, we're never going to get this rolled out. I have been working on it for years. And we finally got to a point where there's a document for you to look at and it's a starting point.
And I would just add that we do have training on that particular issue. Regina, just so you know, through Civic. And it was mandatory that we, we all went through that. It's probably, you know, at a time where in rotation that we're probably revisiting it since we have some new employees that maybe haven't been through it. But certainly that and really sensitivity issues have become more prevalent in the training. So I think that's, that's a point well taken.
Right. That's all I'm saying is make sure that's reflected in your policies and your work rules. And update, you know, social media, you know, telephone calls. People rarely use that. It's all these other ways that people harass and violate people these days.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments? If not, you know, we would certainly encourage you to, to go through the documents as much as you can. And not only in the next two weeks, but even after that, as we just talked about. Whatever we don't, you know, this time through, the group will continue to meet and update things as it goes through. I mean, just even the COVID alone, you can see how these things are fluid. Did you have something else, AJ?
I do, I'm sorry. Regina, which page were you referring to?
It's page, it says 25 on the contents, but it's actually, the physical page is 28.
Okay. Just so everybody's understanding, the specific policies in regards to harassment, sexual harassment, anti-harassment, and retaliation actually take place in depth in the policies and procedures on page 223. So I'll definitely take that into consideration, Regina, and look into it. But I want to make sure that everybody realizes we do have a policy in place.
Right. Okay.
And again, that's page 223.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? So this one will be back at the next meeting. And like I said, I'd encourage you to go through it. I know, I think Brett went through it twice.
I went through the old version and the new version.
Which one did you like better?
There were, there were classic aspects in both. I will say of the new document, I do like very much that the, the point of view of the language is consistent throughout the document. And that just makes it for a much easier read.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is Ordinance 20 of 2021. And this one is a first reading from Public Safety.
I can bring that back. There you go. Thank you.
I had it somewhere.
Yep. Okay. So as the mayor says, it's the first reading, mentioning chapter 70-176 of the Stoughton City Municipal Code, creating a subsection 83 relating to no parking anytime on the west side of Eighth Street, 137 feet from the river. And again, like I said, this is the first reading. I'll come back at the next meeting. Basically, what this is for, this was a request from the Public Works because of a lift station, or was it utilities? One of the two. Because of a lift station that was being blocked by people parking along there. And they were having trouble accessing that lift station. So this would restrict parking around that lift station.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Sure. Now that I figured out how to view the whole screen. Took me all night. All right. This one will be back and at the next meeting as well for a second reading. If you have anything between now and then, let us know. And I believe If you have anything between now and then, uh, let us know. And I believe item number twenty, we've covered. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Not opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, have a good night.